Hello, welcome. Welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting for our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas, on November 22nd, 2022. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing views. Your opinions, suggestions, and comments in favor of or against a topic are welcome. However, your questioning and interrogations will not be acknowledged. This is a town council meeting and not a courtroom. At this time, I need to remind the public that a disruption of this meeting may be considered a criminal offense according to Texas Penal Code 3813 and 4205. You must be signed up to speak during the meeting and stay on topic according to state law. To preserve the order and decorum of the meeting, any person who makes profane, slanderous, threatening remarks or becomes disruptive during the meeting will be asked to leave or may be escorted out by a peace officer and given a citation. Volunteer Clerk Abby Anderson will take real call.
Councilman Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Councilwoman Brian Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Simeon White.
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Tara Sinkovich.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember White will lead us in the pledge and invocation.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we pray to you tonight. We pray for peace and we pray for your presence here in this town council meeting. We know that you're always watching over us and you're protecting and looking out for us. I pray that your wisdom would be in our hearts tonight as we make decisions, that we'd be ready to make decisions no matter how tough they would be and no matter the effects of them, but just be looking to do what's right for our neighbors and what's right for the people that we're here to serve. I pray we'd have peace in mind and just prosper in everything we put our hands to, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, so, under items of community interest, we want to thank Brian and Terry Vincent, Kevin and Josh Sinkovich, Kyle and Carrie Jeffrey for cutting a huge tree out of the road during the November storm. Thanks to Tom Anderson for wrecking the town hall flagpole, which was donated by Poetry Takinag, and thanks to Kevin Sinkovich for working on plumbing connections. Thank you, guys. So, we're going to open our regular agenda, but we have an executive session. In accordance with Texas Code Section 551001, the town council will recess into executive session, which is a closed meeting to discuss the following. Texas Government Code Section 551071, consultation with attorney to conduct private consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with this chapter. Investigation of the incorporation election. And then number two, Texas Government Code Section 551074, personnel matters to deliver the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, town attorney. The time is now 6:34. We're going to break into the executive session.
Should we go?
Okay. The time is now 8:55. We'll reconvene into open session and take action, if any, on the matters discussed in the executive session. Councilmember Jaffe.
Okay. I make a motion that we task Brian and Terry with drafting a memo to provide an official status and update on the research that the law firm was doing, our law firm was doing regarding the original incorporation election and whatever things they discovered.
Citizen comments?
We do have some citizen comments. I don't see anybody on deck, though. So, is there anyone that still wants to speak on this? Robin Followwell, Mandy West, Shelley Smith, Patrick Smith, Tracy Hibbs, Kinsey, and Dale Bryant? No, we're gonna wait. We don't have to, and we're gonna have a memo to really gather our thoughts. We got it really late. It only happened late this afternoon, so it's kind of, we're all trying to digest it ourselves. But we'll provide a memo on that, or I think we're gonna vote on that.
Would anyone like to make a comment on that?
On us making a memo?
Okay, if you're...
I was just seeing if anybody wanted to make a comment on us making a memo, you know, sharing the information.
We want to tell you what, pretty much what we make a motion on is to give you the info of what we just discussed in that meeting, because it would be hard to brief everybody here and make it concise and official.
And we just got it really late, also. So, we're still digesting it. 4:44 PM this afternoon it came in, so we're still trying to digest it ourselves. So, it would be premature for us to even try to do that.
We'll have a case...
And it's incomplete, too.
Case is called by next week.
As soon as we can get it together, but it was incomplete, and we're trying to make sure that we get it a little more completed. So, Robin, do you want to speak?
Well, you pretty much answered. You're just going to get the memo together. And after we've not completed that.
I would, assuming the motion that we just put out passes, I would assume that we would have it ready for the next meeting and we would make it official. At the meeting, we would vote that, yes, that's the...
Possible. It's a short time. It's possible.
Yeah.
The intent is for us to get the memorandum to the citizens as soon as we can, but we're not going to sacrifice accuracy of the statements to rush the delivery of it.
Okay.
I didn't know what the on deck thing was.
We started that last time. We're trying to speed up our process, so that's, yep. Okay, Kinsey? I'm sorry, Tracy was supposed to be before you. I'm sorry, Tracy.
Tracy Hibbs, County Road 2432. So, it's hard to even say anything considering we don't know anything. But what I would suggest, though, before you make any decisions, that you have that memo available to the citizens to look over so we can make possible recommendations or anything, if it's anything that we can do that on.
It's strictly going to be a factual memorandum of the research that we have received from our attorneys.
Okay.
There's nothing that the citizens would be able to... Y'all don't have the research from our attorneys.
Right.
So, we're gonna put out the research. We have attorney-client privileges, so we can't share their document.
Gotcha.
We're gonna extract what we feel is important.
Okay.
And transparent.
Let me see. Not what we feel is important. I think it's all important. I think we're gonna extract an accurate representation of what they've provided.
Good. Appreciate it.
Okay, Kinsey Salisbury.
So, is there going to be a decision made based on that information that y'all received? And is that going to be something that's voted on, or like what happens after y'all put out this memo?
Right now, the only action is to produce the memo.
Okay. And then during, y'all did both executive sessions back there, is that correct? And was there an attorney there the entire time, or were you on the phone with the attorney the entire time, like the open quorum? How was that?
There was an attorney there for the portion that we needed, an attorney.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Jaffe, seconded by Anderson, to create a memorandum. I think Councilmember Vincent and Councilmember Fowler were gonna work on that. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Secondly, on the personnel matters, we were set to, in executive, the council voted last meeting to evaluate our town's attorney firm over the last year and a half and bring it to executive session tonight. Right before the meeting, they went ahead and resigned. So, we're gonna be looking for and looking at another attorney firm. Okay? So, we'll be evaluating that next time. Okay? Okay, going on to number four. Discuss and consider an ordinance of the town council. An ordinance of the town council, the town of Poetry, Texas canvassing and declaring the results of the November 8th, 2021 special election held for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the town the ballot proposition of whether to adopt the levy of a sales and use tax for street maintenance at a rate of 1 and 1/2% to provide for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. So, go ahead and come on deck, those who signed up to speak on this. Robin Followwell, Tracy Hibbs, and Kinsey Salisbury.
Robin passed. Robin passed.
Oh, she passed. Okay. All right. Tracy Hibbs?
Tracy Hibbs, County Road 2432. So, last week, we discussed the ordinance in repelling the exemption on telecommunications, which y'all were gonna massage that.
Okay, this is the canvassing the election?
Yeah. I understand that.
Okay.
So, does this affect that? I mean, so basically, you're voting on that, yes, you accept the sales and tax use and it goes into ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically.
All right. Because I was kind of confused, because we were talking about sales and tax use exemptions last week on the telecommunications part.
Yes, ma'am. That would have to be a whole nother ordinance. But if this passes, then you can vote on potentially that one.
Yeah. So, that was one of my, I guess my question was...
The order?
How does that affect the order?
Okay, good point. All right, Kinsey?
So, this is the one that was dated November 8th of 2022, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because on the agenda item, it says 2021. So, are y'all able to even vote on this with it not being a correct date?
We have to by state law, so we can, we'll just correct that.
We've gotten clarity from legal counsel before that a typo doesn't exclude something.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a concern.
The ordinance was sent out by the paralegal late Friday, and then we had to also correct that. There was an issue there. All right, so we have data basically showing the results, we received unofficial results from Hunt County. We have that in Hunt County, there was four, the vote of the sales and use tax, Proposition A, 351, 4, and 230 against. That is a 60.41%, lead. The against was 39.59%. Total votes in Hunt County, 581. There were 15 undervotes, and an undervote is when someone only checks, skips a box and checks off only a few that they want. The overvote was one. That's, an overvote is when they, if there's four choices, they choose more than one. So, it's an overvote. That's usually, that's thrown out. There was one overvote. In Kaufman County, the total was 101, 4, and 106 against. So, it was 48.79% to 51.21%. So, in Kaufman County, they had two undervotes, zero overvotes, and zero provisional. And one thing I didn't say, in Hunt County, they had two provisional. One was accepted and one was rejected. So, for a total, the total votes were 788 votes cast, a total of 452, 4, Prop A, and 336 against Prop A. I attended a mayor's meeting last week, and a lot, most, in fact, 26, I think, out of 30 bond measures, ballot propositions that had to do with money and finances failed. It's hard times for a lot of people, and so that might have played into some of that. I don't know. But that is something that was brought up in the mayor's meeting. Okay?
So, you said these are unofficial results?
Well, they don't become official until we make them official.
Well, Kaufman County's is official. It says, "I, Tandy Smith, hereby certify the returns to the town of Poetry."
So, I reached out to Jeannie, and she's on vacation.
I also reached out to Hunt County earlier. These are the unofficial results. They told me they would post the official results at 5:00 today, by 5:00. I didn't see them. We might be able to look them up now. I would have had service. I hate that.
I just want official results before we pass this.
No, that's a good point.
I would also want that. They told me there was a discrepancy of one voter between the official and nonofficial. I asked them to send me the document. They said they couldn't, but it would be posted.
Okay.
I also have an edit that I would like to have on page three.
Okay, so you're saying Hunt County?
This is the... Please refer to... And even one, one should say the other day, Hunt County is just...
Oh, yeah, you're right, because it failed in Kaufman.
It passed. It's very fast.
106 against.
Oh, it was against, yeah.
Failed in Kaufman, it passed in Hunt.
Yeah, you got that one? Yeah.
I guess I got the wrong one still. I thought I printed all of them, but apparently not. So, I got this one, but I'll take this one.
She said it would be on the website?
She said, yeah, she said that they were gonna have to post it today, and that the latest was 5:00.
Because today is the last day for canvassing the election by state law, so that's kind of odd that they, that's very odd.
Went to the very last minute? Yeah, so it absolutely should be up there. I asked them, and they thought it was, and then they later corrected themselves.
I mean...
Said it should be later. And they said 5:00 was the cutoff time.
Wow.
That's all that I know.
Because I was given the notice that it would be, we'd send out on the 17th. Well, first, it was the 15th, and then it was the 17th, so...
So, while you're looking for that, I'd like to discuss the edit.
Okay.
On page three, Section 3, enactment of Proposition A, it says, "The town council officially finds and determines that only qualified resident voters of the town were allowed to vote at the special election, et cetera." The problem that I have is the town council officially finds and determines that only qualified voters? We don't have a mechanism to officially find and determine that only qualified voters voted, so I would like to change the officially finds and determines to the word accepts, so that the sentence would read, "The town council accepts that only qualified resident voters of the town were allowed to vote."
That makes a lot of sense. We are not the election department.
Exactly.
I don't know what to tell you. I looked for it earlier. I looked for it before this meeting, because I was gonna print five out for everybody, but I didn't see them posting.
I guess we could do a contingent on receiving...
But we're on day 10 today. I...
It is the last day to canvas.
I called the Secretary of State's office, and they said 10 business days is how they're interpreted, so that actually gives us a little, since we haven't gotten the notice. I mean, I want to put a nail in this coffin, but I understand wanting official results before we dry the ink.
What did she say? Because I'm not seeing where there's anything different.
Right, and that's what I looked for. I don't know why they haven't posted it. They should have.
Because, I mean...
That's something to talk to Hunt about.
We have to do it, but we don't have...
But they said there was only one person off. She acted like we were gonna accept it anyways, but I'm clear, I'm not happy that there's no official...
So, she said there was one, where's one vote off, is what they said?
She said there was...
Okay, here we go. Maybe. It's spinning. Oh, that's just the notice of election. That's not, let's see. No, that's just the notice that we've sent in.
That's too bad. that they kept. That's what she said.
So, when I called, that's all she said. She said that there was 15 undervotes, one overvote, two provisional, one was accepted and one was rejected.
This is Kaufman or Hunt?
Hunt.
That was Hunt.
Kaufman. We have an official letter.
And I did ask for, I did ask via email for that official notice, and I got none. So, it doesn't look like we're gonna get one. It doesn't look like the website has one.
What, Tara, can we, can we make a motion and vote on this? Contingent on getting something official from, I mean, we don't need to have another meeting next Tuesday.
Actually, Mike, I don't remember getting anything signed off by Jenny Ash in the prior elections, only Tandy Smith.
Yeah, I remember having, in the last election, having the same sheet. This was like their fifth one. It was sent on 11/8, and it just said unofficial votes. You know, election divisions do it differently. This is their final one. She does have one here, and I did call.
I don't think we have to have a signed letter, but I at least want something that says official.
Yeah, I would, too. I agree with that, and I think, Jaffe, to your point, I think that's a good plan. So, if it's, it was one, she did tell me over the phone, now, this was, this was not... She told me that there was two provisional, one was accepted, one was rejected. So, do we, out of 788 ballots cast, we had 57.36% were in favor.
So, that one vote's not gonna sway the election in Hunt?
No, it's just, it should tick and tie, though, correctly, so...
Exactly.
So, do we have a motion?
Do you hear citizen comment? Mike? Yeah, I guess first you gotta comment.
Well, we have, Kinsey already spoke.
We've already had the speakers.
Oh, she's just there for five. Yeah, we've already had all who are gonna speak, speak.
Okay, I make a motion. We pass the ordinance to officially canvass the most recent election for the sales tax with the edit that Brian proposed to Section 3, which the first sentence will now read, "The town council accepts that only qualified resident voters of the town were allowed to vote at the special election, comma." That's enough for the edit. And contingent on getting documentation of the official count for Hunt County. We believe this is a good number, but we'd like something to put in our records that says it's official.
Yeah, I think you left off that last sentence, that switch Kaufman and Hunt.
I went ahead and changed that. I went ahead and changed that one. The paralegal had made an error, and I changed it.
And that wording? Yeah.
Or in the, let's see. Was there another?
We were just dealing with the first clause.
Yeah, the only thing I changed was, "The town council accepts that only qualified resident voters of the town were allowed to vote at the special election, comma." That, "The following votes were cast at the special election, and based upon the votes cast, Proposition A was approved in Kaufman County and failed in Hunt County..." Actually, it's wrong. It failed in Hunt County and passed in Kaufman.
Correct.
Or failed in Kaufman.
But it was just the first clause that we were editing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually have a printing that's not correct.
Okay.
That's your motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
So, the one you sent out yesterday still says, "Was approved in Kaufman County and failed in Hunt County." So, that needs to be edited.
That needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just reversed that. She switched them up.
Okay, so there's two edits.
Yes.
Read the entire Section 3 as it needs to be.
Okay, here we go. "The town council accepts that only qualified resident voters of the town were allowed to vote at the special election, that the following votes were cast at the special election, and based upon the votes cast, Proposition A was approved in Hunt County and failed in Kaufman County."
Okay, and Anderson has made that second. So, we have a vote, a motion by Councilmember Jaffe, seconded by Anderson, to accept with those amendments. The ordinance of the town of Poetry canvassing and declaring the results of the joint special election on November 8th. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number five. Discuss and take action on the ground lease agreement with Longhorn Organics, LLC for parking and driveway access.
Not to beat around the bush, but just to jump straight to number 11.
No, not number 11. Number 11 is added.
Ademnity clause of the landlord, I think maybe 24.
24.
24A.
24A, the indemnity section. So, once I received this, I called our attorneys to ask questions, because I still had questions about it. Did they give you any advice on this document?
They did.
Did they approve this indemnity liability section?
Well, initially, Pam spent two weeks on it and didn't have an issue with it, and then when...
It's become an issue, right?
It apparently did, yep.
Did they weigh in on this section this time? Because to my knowledge, this document's unconstitutional by the Texas State Constitution. A government cannot indemnify a personal landlord. It's Article 11 in the Texas Constitution.
Okay, so I did reach out to, well, two things. One is, I have the lease agreement with Union Valley Fire Department and the City of Union Valley. They have a lease agreement and have had since their inception with the, so the city has their building on the fire department's property, and they have a lease agreement with them. In their lease agreement, they have indemnification.
Is that a private entity?
So, it is a, the city has an agreement with a volunteer fire department, so...
Does the city indemnify the fire department's personnel on the city property, or does the city indemnify the fire department, does...
"The tenant, which is the city, agrees to indemnify defendant hold harmless, or hold landlord harmless from and against any and all claims, including all reasonable expenses, including reasonable attorney fees incurred in resisting any such claim by third parties, whether in contact toward or any other cause of action arising out of this lease or tenant's use of premise, except to the extent caused by willful misconduct or gross negligence of the landlord or its employees or agents."
Right, and that's fairly standard. That's not what, the portion that Terry's objecting to in the Longhorn Organic lease.
Yeah, and I asked our attorneys.
So, I do have another, I do have an opinion on this one. So, if, in the Texas, so it says, "The legal reasoning is a bit convoluted, but the appropriations clause of the Texas Constitution prevents the city from creating a debt without also establishing an interest and sinking fund to pay the debt, which you won't be doing. If the indemnification is ever invoked, it is technically a debt for which no funds have been appropriated and no interest and sinking fund has been established." So, if it's not valid, you can go ahead and agree to it.
So, is that the clause, Terry, that you were talking about?
So, have you also reviewed the Texas Attorney General's opinion on this from 1982?
Have you?
Yes.
So, this is from, this is from an attorney who deals with contracts all the time, and he's saying, "Look, the indemnification's a bit sticky, but then who cares? It's a parking lot. I'm going to assume the town won't be sponsoring drag races or skateboarding events in the parking lot. My advice is go ahead..." My advice is go ahead and agree to it. First, it's highly unlikely that anyone might get injured in the town's parking lot and have a cause of action against the landlord. And we have insurance, don't we? Second, the indemnification parent is likely invalid because of the reason that we just spoke." So...
Which attorney wrote that?
This is Mr. Berman.
David Berman?
Mm-hmm.
So not TML, who we have free access to, and not the attorney that had up until tonight?
He's free access.
So the attorneys that we have hired who believe this to be unconstitutional, you're gonna disagree with them?
What is the...
They've given us a lot of bad advice.
Attorney General opinion, I'll write this down so you can go back and read it for yourself, is MW-475. It's MW-475, 1982. The Attorney General was Mark White. Do you want me to read the summary?
Sure. Sure, I'd like to hear.
Okay, well, we must read the intro and the summary so we get both ends of the book. And then, and then there's case law in between. And the question, Mr. Hurley, who is the president of North Texas State University, questioned Attorney General. The response from the Attorney General, "Mr. Hurley, you have asked about the authority of the state to indemnify others contractually. If such authority exists, you ask what acts can be covered by the indemnity agreement. If it does not exist, you ask whether a contract containing such an agreement would be void or voidable." So he goes through his, his research. The summary is, "Only those obligations with which the state agency or university has a constitutional or statutory authority to discharge may be the subject of a valid indemnity agreement." So if you have statutory or constitutional authority.
Okay, so that somewhat agrees with the statement that Tara had, minus the sinking fund portion. So we can't do it. And we can't do it based on constitutional law, both agreed. So, okay.
So basically what he's saying, if it's not valid, you can agree to it, but it's just not valid. And you just basically, look, y'all, they have been over backwards. It's $100 a year. There is no interception, basically. They drive by 8:00 AM, they drive home at 5:00. There's like six people who work there. And they are offering to us their driveway and 30 extra feet, 30 to 35 extra feet for a parking spot for our town. And there's no interception. If we have our meetings there, which we could, with the number of people we have here tonight, we could absolutely meet there. And so saving some money there. If we meet there, we're there at 6:30 at night, they're already gone. There is no interception there. So I think we could, we could pick at things till the cows come home. But at the end of the day, they've been over backwards, they've agreed to have this. Even Pam had had rubber stamped it, so to speak, like three weeks ago. So, I mean, they, it's met their, their attorney, the SBA loan officer also agreed to it. You know, I, it's a parking lot.
My deal is that if it had been in the contract proposed by the, I'm sorry, I'm still ill, my brain's not working at full capacity, and even then it's not all fantastic. If it had been, this language had been in the campground agreement, I would have blown a gasket over it. So I'm still blowing a gasket over it. It's just a matter of principle. I, otherwise, I've looked at this and I have some legitimate issues with it, but I also listened to the citizens last week and, you know, there are so many things that are dependent on this lease being passed. So I would like to say, since it's unconstitutional and we couldn't, it couldn't be enforceable anyway, it shouldn't be a hurdle for the, the bank or the SBC or whoever to, to exclude that language. So I would be willing to pass this with...
See, that's why they have this, only to the extent allowed by law. That's why they put that in there.
I would be willing to vote on behalf of this lease with the condition, like we just did on the previous, that that line be removed.
Which line?
The, that we indemnify them on the portion of the property that we're renting from them.
So basically it's saying, "Look, we are, we are allowing you to use our property." Think about if it was your property. We are allowing them to, they are allowing us to come on their property and they're just saying, "Look, we just want it to be a two-way street. We don't want you to be able to sue our pants off." You know, for, we're allowing you to come on our property and we're gonna only charge you $100 a year. Out of the goodness of our heart, we're gonna let you do this." But they put in that phrase, "only to the extent allowed by law." That's why she put that in there, okay? Because she's having to work with, you know, the SBA loan officers are very difficult, you know? And then you have, you also have their, her lawyer and the bank, the mortgage lawyer that they have to appease. So I think a two-way street, basically, I think that's something that we need to be aware of, that they are, they're taking on a lot here.
Understood, but you're talking about a two-way street and it is a two-way street, but there's three lanes. And right now they're having us occupy two of them. Because we're willing to say, if, we're not gonna hold you responsible for anything that happens to our folks while we're using it on your portion of the property.
We have insurance. We're gonna have insurance to cover that.
And I would like to not file a claim, and I'd also like to finish my statement.
Okay.
So we're saying we indemnify you for your people being, for our people being on your property, because we're leasing their property. They're indemnifying us, saying that their people on their property is not, they're not gonna come after us. But what they're saying is if our people are on your property, then you have to indemnify us. And that's, so using Mr. Berman's analogy, you know, if they decided to hold a street race on our parking lot and somebody got into a wreck, it's saying that we would be responsible. That's the problem that Terry's having.
But it says only to the extent allowed by law.
I understand that. And that's why I'm saying that it would be great if we could clean this contract up so that the things that we know are not allowable by law were removed. And I'm just saying it would, I'm willing to vote for this if we can just ask them to say, "Look, we know this one's not allowed by law. Can't we just scratch it?"
Well, she said that her, the attorneys she's having to deal with, with the bank loan and with the SBA are, are not willing to do that. So that's why I'm saying, when she added that only to the extent allowed by law, that is what she's trying to say there. Okay? So, I mean, you don't kick a gift horse in the mouth. All right, Robin, follow Will.
Robin, follow Will, 10658, County Road 2400. So a few things. First off, I hear a few that have concerns with it and I know that, then again, just like before, the one we talked about this lease agreement a few meetings ago, you kept saying, "This is a generous thing, they're doing such a great thing for us. Basically, we just need to go with the flow and sign with it." And I totally do not agree with that. Their lawyers only care about what's in the best interest for them. It's written for where it can always play a favor for them, not again, not for us. But there are a lot of things in it with, that are wrong. The one, my concern has to do with, besides the parking, we don't have to do that parking there. We're gonna have to pave it anyways. We could do the parking a different route, if you wanted to look at that. But the second thing is the signage, the part that they have in there about the signage, that there's, there's some room for wiggle on that too. And it's something I do know about, so I know you're gonna try to scope that over and just push it on.
Well, we have an option to put the signage on our, on our property.
Which we should do. There's no reason why we should ever put our signage on their property.
So that's not, in my mind, that's not a huge deal because...
But the way that the language is written on the signage on the second part, where there's, there's a sign, there's an A and a B. The way B is written with the signage, it's written that way for a reason.
They just don't want us to be able to put a sign that says...
But that doesn't mean somebody that doesn't come in on the backside of the property, behind us, next to Longhorn, can't put their signage on that same parking easement. If you read the way B reads under signage, there's playroom in that for that right there.
I'm sorry, can I address some items?
You're going to. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're supposed to be interacting with the council.
Actually, the procedure, actually, don't say that, but...
Yeah, I'm not supposed to directly address you unless I'm giving mention. We own half that fence.
Right.
We own the inside half, they own the outside half. So if we wanna put a sign up, we can put a sign up on the inside half and so we're good anyway. We can also put a sign on the front side. If they wanna put a sign on the outside, on the portion that they owned and...
And so can another business, if they decide to be, yeah. And that's not something that I think anybody would want with our town hall, is having somebody else's sign on part of our parking lot for our town hall building.
I understand your concern.
So like I said, there's a lot of little sections in that whole lease agreement that allow a lot of wiggle room for things that shouldn't even come into play with our town hall.
Yes.
So I think this lease agreement's a bad thing. I know you think it's a great, wonderful, generous thing and we should sugarcoat it all and just let them all vote for it.
Well, it's been a work in progress. We've made several amendments.
Plenty of them have shown plenty of concern that it's not a good deal. Thank you.
We'll see. All right. Kevin Sinkovich. Okay. Mandy West. Tracy Hibbs.
Tracy Hibbs, County Road 2432. One of the things I think you need to consider with this ground lease agreement is that if we move forward with this, that becomes public property. Okay? That means that anybody and everybody can use that roadway to access any part of the property from the road all the way to the back. That's something that y'all haven't, I don't think you have considered that, because that becomes a public right-of-way when the town makes an agreement on an easement like that.
They had talked about actually making that an official town road anyway. I'm not sure that they still wanna do that, but they had talked about that originally.
Yeah, so if it's an official...
All the way to the back of what? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
Okay, so when you sign a ground lease agreement and the city is responsible for it, it becomes a public right-of-way. Okay? So that means that anybody, any trucks that wanna go through there, anybody can go through there.
Do you have a legal standing for, for what you're saying? Do you have a legal code for what you're saying?
There is one.
Okay.
I just called it up at the time. But that is something that you need to look into because then that makes us more liable because let's just say some nefarious person decides to drive down that road, crash into our fence, crash into Longhorn's fence, crash into Becky's fence, this town is responsible for that legally.
Well, we would be anyway.
Do what?
We would be anyway.
But if we don't sign the lease agreement, we won't be liable for that. There's other options I think we need to look at.
Like what?
There's plenty of property in that 1.14 acres where we can make some adjustments to stuff.
Okay, so you're, you're talking about $15,000 to $20,000 expense?
Well, we're gonna, we've, we've already overextended ourselves on the town hall building anyway, so...
No, actually, we haven't spent a dime of this year's budget on it.
Well, we spent over $10,000 and there's projected another $10,000 based on your findings.
Okay, so we have a property value that's $350,000?
I'm not talking about property value.
So we've only spent $10,000. I think it's a good trade-off, actually.
Okay, I'm talking about actual expenses.
Yeah, me too.
Based off the bank statements.
Yep, we've spent, we've spent around...
We spent over $10,000.
Over $10,000 to have a building that is debt-free? That's pretty darn good, I think. All right, so Shelley Smith.
Shelley Smith, FM 1565. Okay, I sent you guys drawings that I had come up with, went and toured the property and came up with all kinds of options. And there is absolutely no reason to deal with this easement. I don't know what we've spent on legal fees so far to create this contract, but that could have been invested in this. To do the option that you're talking about with the easement, there's a section where you would need to level the land, throw in asphalt or gravel or whatever in order to make that parkable. Because right now it's just grass and mud, right? I figured that to be approximately 4,400 square feet. If you did just a driveway easement, no parking on it, okay? So you just drove up and drove in right in front of where the town hall is, then you don't need quite as big of an agreement. And you could put in at least six parking spaces so that you just pull in. Fixing up the land to park on those parking spaces is half of the amount of grass, gravel, concrete, whatever, okay? And it also puts a parking space right next to the building so that for handicap parking, that makes that easy, getting a sidewalk or whatever out to that part is excellent. Then there's another option for phase one, where we do a driveway that comes in off of 323. We'd have to add a little dirt, add a culvert. But one thing that Dale Bryant and I noticed is that there is a beautiful area out front that makes a great water retention area so that you could, in cases of heavy rain, let that fill with water, let it drain slowly, solves a little bit of flood issues. Now, I am not a parking lot designer. I've never been one, but I feel like just about everybody in this room is doing everything for the first time, so let's, let's see if we can work. So if we did the driveway all the way up, then we could put in, what have I got here? Eight parking spaces for approximately 8,700 square feet of, of materials, okay? The phase two, which would be like the ultimate, years from now, perfect arrangement, have the driveway and then do the parking spaces across the very back, the northeast edge of the property. You could literally do a line, you know, pull in to all the fence lines there, create a great parking lot. Where the building is right now, potentially you could put in future meeting space addition back behind it, but you'd have to plan where the septic goes in now.
Sounds like your time is up. Thank you for all your effort on that, Shelley.
Can I say something to that?
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you for your work. I looked at it and I really liked you, I liked what you presented there.
Thank you. I think it's incredibly doable and very inexpensive.
Okay, so, so you're, okay, you can, you can sit down. So I just don't want the back and forth. I think that's unhealthy, but I do appreciate the time that you spent on that. So the one statement you made, we'd have to have a smaller lease. Well, I think a lease is a lease, regardless if it's a half acre or, or any of that. So we still would have to have a lease agreement. And that's what we're here to try and, try and remedy.
Yeah, actually, that was one of my points after looking at those. One of, one of my thoughts was that I think that the, the last option, I have been responding in an email, I think the last option is the phase one with the parking in the back is, I like that option. I just think if we get a...
There's a huge problem, though, oversight.
Well, yeah, that's, that's where the water's coming in right now.
Yeah.
But what I'm thinking with the lease though is it might give us the time to get, to raise the funds to build something so that we're not just doing everything in an expeditious way.
Well, and this, the, the septic engineer has placed it in a specific, he's a, he's a decades experienced septic engineer. She was, yes, we can, because it affects her plan.
Well, I got more information because y'all asked me to contact Carl Crowe.
Well, she's talking about her, her particular plan. So I did talk with the septic engineer on that and...
Sounds like a good...
She's, I, okay, I guess you are.
Well, I mean, y'all asked me to talk to Carl Crowe.
It is kind of, it is kind of related, I suppose.
If we're considering stuff. It has septic on it. So Carl Crowe said, either laws have changed since he gave us the bid or he missed it somehow, but government entities and I think commercial businesses have to do a BOD test now. So basically they're gonna sample the water once a year. He didn't know what that cost. He thought $250 or $300 and then plus we have to pay him $250 a year for his contract. So $500 to $600 expense for the way... So five to six hundred dollars expense for the way it's engineered now. So I mentioned to Carl, I said, "Well, I really called you about the low ground pressure system." He said, "Yeah, y'all need to contact your engineer again, tell him to call me and we can discuss where I want to put it." He was, he drove to the site that day when I was on the phone with him. That gets us out of the BOD test and that gets us out of his contract, so instantly saves us six hundred dollars a year.
Okay, so where was he suggesting you put it?
He was walking the property at the time and he just wanted to talk to the engineer about it. He wants to go, I guess, if it's sitting perfectly north and south, north.
But that's right in the way of the path, the way the water flows. Like, the way he put it now, it's up high and it doesn't affect the water flow.
So the way it is right now, it's right in the middle of the flow path.
No, it's, the tank itself is up high where the building is. The, and I, what I talked to the engineer about is, hey, we've got potentially a problem with the...
Well, this is an underground system. It's designed to saturate into the ground.
Okay, so I'm familiar with the septic. So if, he's saying if the sprinkler head is where it's currently at is, he said, "Look, if your people have problem with that, we could possibly move it over to where the old pond site was and then you could sprinkle it there." But you don't want to put it in the pathway of the dry creek.
This is not a sprinkler head. That's what I'm getting at. That's what we talked about, not having a sprinkler head.
The low-pressure system.
And the system costs quite a bit more.
He said there was a small increase. He wouldn't quote me until he's seen it. He said, "But if you're saving six hundred dollars a year, it will quickly pay for itself." So I don't know what Tom paid for the engineer last time.
It's three fifty.
No, the engineering...
It was three fifty, engineering.
I didn't pay for that, Terry.
Okay, whoever tore it, the city.
So the engineer said that, I have to talk with him again on that. That's a good point, but I don't... He said it was super, it was very much more expensive, but anyway. Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, 187301565. The current ground lease agreement indicates that landlord reserves all rights and interests in the driveway for any and all uses by landlord or any other third party. Does the council know tonight how many third parties the landlord intends to have subject to the agreement? And this will also play in with the liability and indemnity obligations.
They get deliveries. I think that's what they're referring to.
No, I'm talking about third parties.
Pardon?
Okay, well, let's try it this way. The rock road that'll be part of this easement agreement, it runs basically parallel to the town hall property line. Is that correct or am I mistaken?
It is parallel.
Once you get past that back property line for the current town hall, the rock road makes a ninety-degree left-hand turn. Has anybody ever noticed that? And then part of it, though, continues straight towards Longhorn. And part to the side of that rock road are multiple eighteen-wheeler trailers. Does anybody know who is using that part of the easement?
I own that property.
So you would be any of the third party?
I have hay delivered there all the time.
Okay, so when we're looking at this very sharp indemnity obligation, one of the parties that might benefit from the language of the liability and indemnity provision is the mayor's company. So let's take a little different look at all this. And I'll just say real quickly, because I'm sure at three minutes I'm gonna be disappeared. A ton of those things I brought up last time still have not been fixed. There's recommendations by the town's attorney that says Paragraph nineteen is an unnecessary burden on the town. I don't see that any change has ever been made on that. The discussion tonight, I think, reflects a fundamental misunderstanding of the indemnity obligations contained in Paragraph twenty-four. The comment to the side of it on the current version says, "This is, quote, 'the two-way street,' end quote, we talked about." The indemnification provisions in Paragraph twenty-four are not a two-way street. They're a one-way street. And they're in the benefit of the landlord and potentially the landlord's parties, the third party. I have many more comments, but I've run out of time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Patrick. Dale Bryant?
Dale Bryant, 11139 County Road, 2464. A couple of things. I personally had a discussion with my architect that I've probably worked with for twenty years and explained to him the situation regarding the parking and you're basically forty feet away from the building. He said, "There is no way in hell that you're gonna be able to meet the ADA requirements for having a parking lot with Colici." He says, "Take a wheelchair out there, get in it and see how well that works."
We had a donation of concrete, so...
Okay, so you're gonna concrete part of the easement? Right?
We have the authority to do that according to this ground lease.
And then you're gonna build a, and that parking space is gonna be forty feet away from the building?
Well, I mean, we have a bid for fifteen hundred dollars for a handicap ramp that's made out of wood.
Well, that's a ramp.
So, but it's twenty-seven foot and then you can put...
Well, actually, it probably needs to be about thirty-three or thirty-four if you measure the distance from the grade to the threshold. It's thirty-four, so it's gonna have to be thirty-four feet long, not twenty-seven. Just to let you know, because you're...
Are you an expert in ADA ramping?
The ramp has to be at the level of the threshold. You can't get in a wheelchair and have to go up an inch or two to get into the building. It's gotta be level. So all I'm saying, whoever measured that probably measured...
Well, I think he's taking...
To come in under the threshold, not at the threshold. That's, but just, again, I know it's a little picky, but just to let you know, if this has not been engineered properly with ADA, you're gonna have trouble.
And I have reached out to the ADA sort of, yes, I have.
And the new requirements are out for the ADA bathroom, which is no way that the bathroom in that building is ever gonna qualify or meet ADA standards. And I've got copies if you'd like to see them.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll take it.
The new code, I think it's twenty-one or twenty-two. So that's the ADA issue. The other issue I think that we're running into is just like, I think someone else said, all right, real quick. Section five, landlord and whoever else the landlord may allow to use or occupy the premises. Again, who's gonna occupy the premises other than us? This space is sitting right in front of our property. Who's gonna occupy that other than us? Who? I mean, you know, is Longhorn gonna need to do it? And with that, what we need to have is improvements of the tenant need to be for the exclusive use of the tenant. Because the way this lease is written, both in Section five and several other places, if we don't have exclusive use of that parking lot, then the city can, somebody else can. You just need to put the word exclusive tenant.
Okay, so I'm looking at your diagram. In the handicap bathroom, we have, we have quite a bit of space. It's well over this.
You don't have seven point one feet paint to paint out, obviously.
That's the big part that you literally just need, seven point one.
So it's quite large.
Seven point one, that's the new...
I mean, I can take a tape to it, but it is quite large. Okay, so Catherine Hartwick? Okay. Lisa Ray?
Hello, my name is Lisa Ray. Here going. Address 202 Rockwall, Meadowdale Street, Rockwall, Texas, 75087. I am not a current resident of poetry, but I am looking to, I am moving to poetry. And I love the town. I love everything you're doing here. I'm just curious, what is... I mean, they just don't, I mean, I'm trying to figure out why no one wants the town hall here.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, too.
Because, I mean, these...
He'll survive.
Well, I'm sorry, because, I mean, I'm really nervous up here, y'all. I mean, this is not something I really wanted to do, but I'm just curious what, I mean, these people, I was at the last meeting, well, the first meeting, I was appalled. I couldn't believe what I saw. All I see is...
Point of order. We're discussing the lease agreement.
Yes, sir. I acknowledge that. I just do sense there is a lot of hostility here and no one is gonna come to any type of agreement. I guess that's all I have to say about all that.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Kenzie Southbury, I guess she... Mike Griffin?
No, Mike's...
Mike passes. Carmen, Malina?
Hi, I'm Carmen Malina, 105072332. This is my first time here speaking to, but I have been attending several meetings. And one thing I just want to ask, why such a big deal with a parking lot? They have been talking about, you know, the leasing agreement and all that. I wonder if they had this kind of trouble when Rockwall County, the agreement with Dallas for, you know, the Lake Hubbard, they have a land lease agreement too. So I wonder if they had the same kind of problem because that's a big thing. It is not a parking lot, so... I mean, and then it looks like everyone that comes in here acquires, suddenly, you know, you get a, being a lawyer, engineer or anything. I'm not either of those, but one thing that I would like to say because I admire what you guys are doing, we really appreciate that. We have been only here for one year and a half or so. I wouldn't take advice like, because I see some of y'all take advice from some people like really seriously. And just to put an example, I have many friends that they are lawyers. One of them has been for eighteen years a federal attorney. Then I have another one that is, every single time he's featured on the Dallas Magazine as one of the best lawyers in the Dallas forward area. The thing is, whenever I needed legal advice on anything that is not the thing that they control, they have never, ever said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I can help you with that." No. Because even those good lawyers are always like, "You need to go to someone who is, you know, special in this." Because I could just go to the internet and do a lot of research, print papers and come here like yada, yada and, you know, use a lot of complicated words and say like, "No, you guys are doing that wrong because, you know, yada, yada and blah, blah and this," I mean. And you guys don't have that year for, you know, just confirming what I'm saying is true or not, so... I find really sad that some people come here just to complain and be negative. Just saying that that's how Hitler won the elections, being negative and complaining about everything, so that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen.
Is there anybody else?
So to continue on with our discussion, we all took a sworn oath. One of the first things that Judge asked us is to uphold the Texas Constitution or the Constitution that guided us, right? So with her question about researching and looking up stuff, I have sworn to uphold the Constitution. I'm with Brian. I want this to go through, but we have attorneys who we've paid, some agree with, some don't. We have a Texas Constitution that says we can. I'm with Brian. If we could just strike that. Because it already says that the law, to what extent the law will allow or only to the extent allowed by law. So Texas Constitution doesn't allow it, the words don't need to be in there.
Now, it's far from perfect, other than the indemnification. But, you know, after listening to discussions last week, like I said, there's a, there's a lot that this is standing in the way of. So I'm unwilling or unwanted, but willing to overlook some of the imperfections. This one just is one of those things that, again, if we could just say, "Let's have this stricken because it's illegal."
What, do you, like, the whole thing or how are you wanting to amend it?
Let me see your copy.
I mean, what if we did something like Union Valley did?
See, I wondered about that. Why can't we just steal exactly what they said?
Let me see the, let me compare.
She said they, "Longhorn has released the tenant from liability to the extent caused by the gross negligence or intentional misconduct of landlord, landlords, employees, agents and/or contractors. Longhorn feels this is the two-way street we mentioned in the meeting. Longhorn is responsible for its acts and tenants is responsible for theirs."
I mean, that's, we just heard that's the way most cities do their ordinances, is to grab them from others anyways. I would rather us just take Union Valleys than try to mash this one into working and pretty much just making our own. Rather go with something tried and true.
Yeah, the Long, excuse me, the Union Valley is agreeable to me. You want to take a look at it, Terry?
Terry, could you just read it?
Yeah.
Please? Tenant agrees to indemnify, defend and hold landlord harmless from and against any and all claims, including all reasonable expenses, including reasonable attorney fees incurred in resisting any such claims by third parties, whether in contract, tort or any other cause of action arising of this lease or tenant's use on the property, on the premises, except to the extent caused by willing, willful misconduct, gross negligence of the landlord or the employee and its agents. And that would pass the Constitution.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
I'm good with that. The part in the parentheses is what I have the most problem with.
Okay. All right. I do like the wording on their, on Union Valley's contract. To me, it's just more straightforward. Any other comments on this?
Well, you know, the original contract that we had that the bank rejected, I don't remember indemnification and hold harmless clause in it. It did?
That's what we discussed last time.
I don't, it was in it? The one that was rejected...
Oh, the original, I don't know.
The one that was rejected by the bank.
I don't know on that.
That's why when I saw this, I thought this is in addition. We didn't have that before. And I personally, I don't like indemnification and hold harmless clauses. I think it's just too much of a blank check. But, kind of like Brian, I mean, if it says to the extent allowed by law and it may not be useful anyway, you know, maybe you should go ahead, but I don't like it. I don't like anything like that because it's too much of a blank check and lawyers can open up things that we can't even perceive.
Lawyers like it because lawyers benefit from it.
Yes, that's correct.
And, yeah.
But we're the ones that would suffer for it if it's invoked, but...
Well, it's citizens, because it's a financial burden.
Right.
It would take us into bankruptcy.
Well, I mean, we have...
Take us to insurance claims and then...
Insurance claims. We have, I mean, they have insurance, we have insurance. Hopefully, you would never need it. There's, again, there's minuscule chance. I understand the reason for contracts. I've done a lot of them, actually. But is there... But is there any other discussion?
Would you be willing to pass contingent on that indemnification clause being exchanged?
I mean, I like that one, but I just, it doesn't seem to indemnify them. I mean, I think it would carry weight. I just, I don't want to rush into anything for the sake of, rush into something wrong for the sake of doing it.
Well, this is our third meeting, and I think it's hardly rushed.
Well, but here we are with a document that's...
Well, they have made significant modifications.
I agree, there's been a lot of changes.
They have, they have, again, they have really tried to work with us. And again, it's their property, they don't have to do this for us. Okay, so, but at this point, it would cost significant funds, significant to do any other option. It would cost significant.
Yeah, and, I mean, this is a five-year lease, and what I'm hoping is that it would give us five years
It would give us some time to get to the point that we want to be. That we want to be, because it would cost significant, so...
And I do want to thank again Ms. Shelley for providing us with this. And I think we might even be able to incorporate a couple ideas. Like, maybe we look at three parking spaces so that we don't have to worry about ADA requirements as much, maybe we just have some handicap parking.
Oh, handicap parking, see, that's a really good suggestion.
But I guess just what you just read from Union Valley, I believe it was? I don't see where it is an improvement over the Section A. Section A has, also says, "Tenants shall not be liable to the landlord, blah, 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 blah."
Yeah, but look in the parentheses about halfway down, where it says that...
Including to the extent the same arises from the negligence or misconduct of landlord and/or landlord's agents, employees, or contractors. That's what you're...
Yeah, that's my big holding, as I read that, it's that we would still be liable in the event that the landlord, landlord's agents, employees, et cetera, were injured on our property. That's how I'm reading that. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm fairly well-versed in English. So, that's how I read it, and that's the problem that I have.
So, if you replace that with some of this language...
If you replace Section 24 with...
Twenty-four A, you mean?
Twenty-four A with this.
Twenty-four A with this from Union Valley that Terry just read, then I would, I would be much happier.
I would also be much happier.
You don't talk about happiness for me.
Yeah. Well, it's not perfect either. I mean, I think we could pick through this one forever, but I think it would be good enough for, until we get on our feet with something better, like these pretty nice plans offered here. Just looking into that whenever we might have more funding in the future.
Yeah, I guess I'm at the point of saying, I think we need to get on with it, because we need to get other things done. And I don't like it, but on the other hand, I do think we need to move forward. And the fact that they've got this only to the extent allowed by law seems to be a get out of jail card, but I don't know that it is, not being a lawyer.
Right. What are your thoughts? I think I've made them one clear.
Okay, so do we have a motion? I'm sorry, you can't.
So, I guess the motion that we were just discussing was to accept it with, as it is, with the 24A being substituted by this paragraph that Terry just read, which is taken from Union Valley. Is that, is that what you were saying, Brian and Terry?
Correct.
So, I mean...
And then, obviously, it'll have to pass legal scrutiny, but, yeah. That's what I would be willing to do.
So, we do have, we do have this lawyer's opinion that, when it says only to the extent allowed by law, that we've already covered ourselves on that, but...
But that's not a lawyer that has fiduciary responsibility to us.
But the one that Union Valley has, does it have that same statement, "Only to the extent allowed by law"?
It does not.
Well, then, I would say, starting after that, if we're going to substitute this in, it should start after, "Only to the extent allowed by law," then the rest, because I do like that initial phrase.
All right, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion by Anderson to accept the ground lease agreement with the amendment after 24A, "Only to the extent allowed by law," inserting the language from this other agreement that seems to be acceptable to the others. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and so we have a motion by Anderson, second by Vincent. All those in favor?
I'm a no.
Okay, four to one, okay? Four in favor, one opposed. Okay, so that passes? Okay, so... On the number six, sadly, they weren't able to get back to me the information, we had the information from, so we're going to have to postpone this one. They just, they went on the holiday, I think. And so, we had the information, but not with the adjusted new amount, or the amount. And I'm also checking, I'm comparing shopping as well. So, I thought, you know what, let's, let's go with, I wanted to see some other things, too. So, with, we just didn't, they didn't, weren't able to provide that information. She normally is very good about getting back, but I think they went on holiday or something. So, we don't have the, those amended insurance rates, so I'm sorry. No action on that one. Were there any comments on that? Robin Followwill? Okay, Tracy Hoods? Kenzie? Yep. My apologies, I just, they didn't send it back. Number seven, discuss and take action on changing the regular December meeting to Tuesday, December thirteenth, owing to the holiday week. Our regularly scheduled time is the third Tuesday of every month, but that's Christmas week. And we had some complaints last year, like, "Why are we meeting on Christmas week?" So, I thought, "Well, let's just bump it up," so...
Can we note there's a complaint this year for a meeting on Thanksgiving week?
I hadn't heard any since, we had no choice.
Not out loud.
We had no choice with the canvassing. I guess we could have met last Thursday.
I'm in favor of this.
Okay. All right, you're in favor? Citizens, Robin?
I would prefer to do Monday, I'll just get on the record, rather than Tuesday, because it interferes with my wife's nephew's basketball games on Tuesday. And I don't like to miss them.
If we're moving it, then will you, I could see moving it to something more convenient.
Well, if we're going to move it, any comments on that? You're a council member, you have a right to say your piece. Monday? Are there any conflicts with work schedules?
Monday the 12th.
Monday the 12th? Well, it's not 13, so that's better. All right, we have Citizen Robin Followwill? Tracy Hoods? Kenzie Southbury, did she leave? Okay. All right, so we have an, is that a problem for anybody's work schedule on the Monday? My sign won't, our sign won't work, but I guess we could put a poster over it saying, "Monday, meeting this Monday."
I mean, it's on...
You know, we have a chalkboard sign, or a sign that we put out.
Does the church do anything Mondays?
We have our water board meeting on Monday, right?
But it's during the day? Is it that night?
No, it's on a Monday, so...
Oh, okay. I guess we would have to check with Chuck is my, Chuck Gilli is my contact person for the church, so I guess we'd have to ask permission.
So, it's approved multiple days, then, going...
That's a good idea.
Plan A is Monday, Plan B is Tuesday.
Okay, we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move the December regular meeting to preferred Monday, the 12th, and if not, Tuesday, the 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Fowler, seconded by White, to make, change the regular December meeting to Monday, December 12th. If that date's not available, then to Tuesday, December 13th. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
And you'll put that out as soon as you know, correct?
As soon as I can make contact, then I can, to council, is that what you're referring to?
To everybody. Public, as much as we can, yeah, on our calendar.
Okay, we'll definitely work on that. Okay, so the time is now 10:11? I already did that. Oh, general comments, general public comments. Robin Followwill? Del Bryant?
Del Bryant, 11139, County Road, 2464. To address some comments made earlier, we're not against City Hall. We're not against the building. I think there's a lot of people just want to see it done right. We have a lot of issues that just haven't been properly addressed. The whole City Hall thing has never been done right. So, that's, we do want the City Hall, we just want it done right. To address Councilman Fowler's comments, there is a difference between when you're reading the one document, gross negligence versus negligence. We're indemnifying this landlord from negligence, okay, and misconduct, but we have to identify them if they have, only if they are gross negligent. And there's some attorneys in the room, there's a big difference. And the city needs to watch that language when you're talking about negligence and gross negligence.
You're not supposed to talk about things that haven't been addressed.
The other thing is, real quick, I don't know if y'all are aware of the fact that the state just adopted new floodplain maps? Are y'all aware of that?
We heard about that.
And I think in June or July, they go into effect January 12th of 2023. I have a floodplain map, and it's kind of hard to see, but I'll give this to you. This little orange line is the contour line, and this is the creek that runs to the west of 323. And this little orange contour line is basically, everything in that contour line is floodplain. Okay? Quite possible that a portion of the city's property is in the floodplain. According to the survey that's attached to the lease, if you read Part Five, I'm going fast, "No flood information was researched." That's the surveyor's certification, okay? So, you don't know whether you're in the floodplain. If by chance we went in and filled the area where the building is at, and we filled floodplain, that's illegal. You do know that.
We filled a pond.
I know you, I know you did, but you also...
That we put in.
Built in part of the site, and if you did that over floodplain, we could potentially have an issue. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, so you're saying you couldn't put parking down below?
So, what I'm saying is, what we should do, city, council, step back, take a deep breath, and we need to step back and look at everything and get, we need to right the wagon. It's, we need to go in, we need to have an ADA study done, we need to go in and have a floodplain study done, find out what that elevation is, establish a benchmark for that elevation, and make sure that the building is out of the floodplain. We're just, we're just, we're just out there spending money, and we're going to mess up.
So, the school...
We need to be good stewards of the city's limited funds.
And yes, we're trying to do that. So, poetry, so it says, "Poetry Community Christian School is in this blue area," and that's what you're saying is the flood, flood?
That's the floodplain. But if you look at the little orange line, the orange line, that's a contour line. We're in that same contour as that floodplain. So, I, Council, listen, I'm not saying we're in the floodplain. All I'm saying is, there's a potential that we are in the floodplain.
So, you're saying the blue is the flood zone?
That's the contour line.
The contour?
The orange line on each side of that blue line is what he's saying. And so, as I'm...
And I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure what the contour line, I don't know if those are twenty-foot contours, contours, ten-foot, five-foot?
They're ten-foot.
Ten-foot?
Ten-foot.
They're ten.
Okay, so we're in that same contour, and all it would take is have that surveyor come back out, establish a benchmark, and give us a benchmark of the finished floor of the building. We solved that problem, a couple hundred bucks. That's all we need to spend, and we'll have that satisfaction before we go spend more money on this building. And it may be as simple as, hey, we may have to raise the building three inches, five inches. You have to be a foot out of flood to avoid flood insurance.
Okay, it's already, okay. Thank you, Del, you're, you're...
You got to raise the building.
Thank you, Del.
Thanks, Del.
Kevin Sinkovich passed, Jack Sinkovich passed, Mandy West? Tracy Hoods? Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Lisa Ray? No. Glenn Strauss? Okay. Kenzie Southbury? Kenzie Southbury? Mike Griffin? The time is now 10:17, meeting adjourned.